Good evening. It is 7:00 PM here in the Veterans Room. I call this Joint General Government Town Council Subcommittee Meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Citizen Member Clements.
Present.
Citizen Member Shay.
Present.
And myself, present. All are council for. Agenda item number three, I would ask that we add the agenda item, the meeting minutes of March 17th. They just forgot to get added on. They got sent out with everybody.
Can we also add another thing? I noticed that one of the, can we also take the, once we get these done, can we take the two bottom items out of order and then go to the agenda for the budgets?
So you're talking about agenda item number 25 and 26?
That the two really quick ones.
Yeah, move them up to after. Friendly amendment. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Alright, okay. It's added to the agenda. Agenda item 3A, consider and accept the Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of April 5th, 2022. Do I have a second? Did everyone have a chance to read them or?
Apparently I missed them.
They're quick.
Yeah, those were short.
Yeah.
It's the other one that I wasn't here for.
And that one was short too.
Sure.
Alright. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? It's unanimous of all present. Agenda item number three B, accept the General Government Subcommittee Minutes of March 17th, 2022. March 14th, I'm sorry. Did I say 17th?
It does say March 17th.
It does? So yeah, it was the March 17th meeting, right?
It was.
Yeah.
How come I have April 6th?
No, April.
March 17th was the first one in our, in our calendar.
Yes, and April 5th was the one we just voted on.
Oh wait, did I do it wrong? Maybe. I should have just changed, right? No.
No, you were at that one. Oh no, the April 5th.
No, it was April 5th. Yeah, that's why I had, I touched your.
Yeah, the April 5th one.
Do you want to abstain from that?
Yeah, could you, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong.
It's alright. Right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion on the March 17th minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Okay. Agenda item number 25, review slash discuss Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, MIIA, health and dental insurance renewal for the Blue Cross/Blue Shield Plan's effective July 1st, 2022, and entertain a motion to recommend to the Town Council for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, Mr., oh, Mr. Manager. We moved up the agenda items number 25 and 26 to get them dealt with before all the budgets though. So we're on agenda item number 25. Yeah, we're taking 25 and 26 first, so that way, before the rest of the budgets.
I might just get some pressure. Oh, you gotta put the thing, you gotta put a book.
Yeah.
Well, the back, the back window's closed too.
Oh, alright. He's fine, but for sure.
Soon we'll have the air conditioning.
So, as you know from our, well, two things. Annually, we have to renew our, what we get our insurance rates. We obtain our insurance from Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency, otherwise known as MIA. They're, they provide their offerings. They work with a lot of municipalities. The benefit of being part of MIA is because there's a lot of communities together, approximately 150, we benefit from the pooling of the rates, but not only that, they take a lot of the high losses and they pool them together and they're shared. The, if you have a lot of high claims, over $75,000, those are shared amongst the participating towns. So, we don't necessarily feel the pain if we have isolated claims here in town. So, it's one of the benefits of going with MIA, but they have offered favorable rates over the years. And this year, we talked to our consultant and we decided not to shop the rates this particular year. It was a question that came up because of what was presented to us by our consultant and by MIA. We did, on both of these issues, at the request of quite a few employees, we worked to, and actually, Ms. Shay was the one, first one who brought it to my attention just before the beginning of the year, Gen Gov. She indicated that the Insurance Advisory Commission under Mass General Law, Chapter 32D, Section 3, had not met in a while. So, we helped reconvene that. I reached out to the various labor unions in town, as well as several of the departments here. Ms. Russell, who's in the audience, attended those meetings as well. So, we assured them the proposed rates and also the proposed split in the insurance, which is the subject of Article 26. They did send a letter supporting our proposals, and I believe I shared that with the council. May, may have wanted to share with the citizens, Subcommittee members, but I did share that after Monday.
That's okay, I'm good.
Nevertheless, we provided rates here. We had given estimates that could range anywhere from 1% to 8%. I believe our, what's it, 4%? 4% was the actual change, so we received a favorable rate. And the plan that you should have received, if you copy, would show the rates for the various products, with the 300 deductible, our PPO, our HMO Blue, our HMO Blue, as well as the dental plan. And we are just asking support so that we can renew at these rates for our employees. And that's Article 25. And if, to save a little time, I could just continue with the explanation for Article 26. As I indicated in the budget presentation, the, I had a slide showing how we had essentially 50% turnover in town all in the last 12 months. That was, you know, unprecedented event, in large part due to the pandemic. People have changed positions, they made lifestyle changes, wanted more quality of time with their family. But one of the over, one of the overwhelming comments that we heard when we were trying to fill these positions and talking to department heads was that retention and recruitment was one of the biggest issues we had. And it's because we are not as competitive with some of the communities, or the vast majority of communities, I should say, around us that offer a split of 70-30 in insurance. And that can often mean a difference of approximately $1,000 back in the pockets of the employees when they're paying for the family plan. So, working with Ms. Harneus and Ms. Ashley, looking at what we are paying in some of the savings we've had recently through attrition and some other savings in rates, we believe that we can still, with minor adjustments, including contributions from the school department, because they received an extraordinary amount of Chapter 70 money this year. And we took work with Dr. Balar. He's contributing $188,000 from the school side to this, recognizing his issues with recruitment and retention. We believe that we can fund in this budget the 70-30 split. And that will help us not only recognize our existing employees who worked throughout COVID. Many towns shut their doors. These people worked hard. It will also help us retain the new people that are coming in and then help us recruit new people as we try to fill the empty. And so that, that is why we proposed this. And we think it will help us get better people and retain the quality people we have going forward.
Alright, do I have any questions from members of the board about 25, the health and dental revenues?
Not specifically a question, just an observation that roughly a thousand bucks a month per person is obscene. I understand that the system is the way it is. That's why we need to get rid of this system.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, one of the reasons that our rates to it are higher, I mean, you look at the deductibles, they have a $300 deductible. That's nothing for the average people. $1,500, $2,500 is more what you will get.
I know.
But there was a time when we went through, and I'm a little confused. I thought we were already at 70, 70-30.
We are at 60-40. We have been, the town changed several years back. Prior to that, they had been 50-50.
Oh, that's right. It was 50-50. There's a 60-40. I'm thinking 80. Yeah, okay, so 70-30, great. Yeah, no, we, this is something that's been discussed for a long time. But, as I said, they, one of the problems we had with getting better pricing was the fact that a lot of people didn't want to change the benefits they had. So, co-pays are, you know, super inexpensive. They're, again, from a business perspective and knowing what we have to do for our employees and stuff. I mean, these, these averages, or even my, you know, other people I know, these, these numbers are very good numbers for the employers. Yes, they're paying a lot, but they chose, we tried to get, like, I remember when the fire unions, I remember trying to get them to see the, the big picture of having an FSA perhaps, or, and people didn't want to change. They, they liked having low co-pays and low, you know, deductibles and all that. Well, then you end up with the higher premiums. So, if they, you know, depends how you take a bite out of it, but it's just, that's just comment. But 70-30, that's good, if we can, if we can afford that.
Any other further questions, comments? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Thru You. I think that's a pretty good idea. I think this was promised to me several years ago. So, I know a lot of other towns in the area are offering 75-25. So, this is just changing the share 70-30 and the other one is the increase in the cost, right?
Yes, our, our annual renewal rate is.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other further questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 26, review and discuss Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, MIIA, proposed health insurance 70-30 split effective July 1st, 2022, and entertain a motion to recommend to the Town Council for approval.
Second.
Mr. Manager explained it in the last one. Any other further discussion? Seeing we have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present.
It was received happily at the school committee meeting.
Alright, we'll move on to agenda item number four. Review the fiscal year 2023 Town Council Budget in the total amount of $20,650 and entertain a motion to submit to the Town Council as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright. How did, I, I, I figured we'll go line by line.
Section by section.
You want to do it section by section? So, does anyone have any objections then to the Town Council Budget as presented?
No, I just want to raise something that we were, we were talking earlier today about, a couple of us were talking earlier today about the idea of whether or not we want to increase the Town Council recording clerk's salary from $26,600 to $25 an hour. I mean, it wouldn't change the grand, the grand total line item for $10,000, but we, just a concept out there to think about whether we about, whether or not we would get somebody who, somebody else to replace Mary because she's leaving. And see if it might be worth, worthwhile to raise it a little bit and see if we can get somebody who'd be, be willing to do more of the hours and all that stuff. And wouldn't have the conflict of, of a job, another job to do as well. I don't know if that would work necessarily, but just thought to put out there, it won't change the budget either. Any thoughts on that there, Chair?
I'm sure if I could. What, what, um, rate did you say? Did you say like 26?
We were just throwing around the idea of 25 bucks an hour.
25?
I don't know if that, I mean, that would require us changing the schedule. Well, I don't, I'm not sure which schedule she's on, Schedule 1 or 5.
Right, and I was just looking at, it's on Schedule 1 listed as an S7, I believe.
S5, step 2. Oh, that's Mary.
Yeah.
Oh, the recurring, recording clerk is S5?
Yes, that's her.
Okay, okay. So maybe it's, it would be worth considering maybe reclassification to an S7? I don't know what Adriana would think, you know, if she has any comments or anything.
Mary's position?
Yeah.
So, Ally just tried to fill that position in her past municipality, and it's a very hard position to fill. I think moving it up to an S7, make it more marketable, be able to hire someone for that role. So, I do agree with that, Karen.
The 2561, though, is the highest step in an S7, just to let you know.
Oh, okay.
So that would be on the high end.
We'll be one step down. If it's 2561, what's the?
2442.
2442.
Three's an S8.
When does that start?
That starts at 2214, goes up to 2695. I would say either one of those.
Has anyone done a market, you know, survey to see what other recording clerks are getting paid in any of the surrounding areas? Just curious.
Well, Adriana had said that it was hard to.
It was hard to fill.
Well, it's hard to fill, but the question is what, what are they all offering?
We were just notified that she plans on retiring, but we can certainly conduct a market analysis.
Yeah, I mean, just even a couple.
Absolutely.
That's, that was probably the best hire I think ever during that time.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, for, on council stuff, that really took such.
It's a huge help.
All the controversy.
Any other questions or comments on the Town Council Budget? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Thru You. Actually, the recording clerk, I think we've been talking about needing a recording clerk for all of our meetings.
Yeah, we've been talking about that.
Because, you know, a lot of people just have a hard time taking notes while they're trying to run the meeting. I don't know what that would do. I know we couldn't change this tonight, but something that we should consider, hiring somebody who could do every single meeting that we have. Because, maybe even have their own little office or something, so they can handle all of our activities. So, that's just something that I would like to throw out there. I have a couple of questions here. Conferences and meetings, 3,500. Does anybody on the Town Council attend to any of these conferences or meetings? Because I don't think I've attended one since I've been on the council.
I used to attend it.
Yeah.
It's been COVID.
COVID, yeah. Mr. Manager.
They were supposed to have an in-person MMA meeting this year, and I know prior to them cancelling at the last minute, there were a handful of counselors, probably two to three, Mrs. Ryan, I think, Mr. Jovian, Council Chairman Daniels. So, it, those are usually, it's the fees and whether they stay, I can't remember if they kind of hotel stay or not. And there's some of the dinners, so it can get rather costly. So, there was at least three people that were.
There's usually two or three, sometimes four to go a year. I get one, I have never gone. But I'll, I'll actually take place, I'll participate in some of the various other events that are usually online. But I haven't paid, they have, I've had to pay for them. Fortunately, fortunately, so.
I do have a question. How many hours is a physician scheduled for? Weekly hours?
You're on the secretary?
I don't know. We have a specific number.
I don't have that off that, not my hand.
Yeah, it just, it just set up as a $10,000 line item. And she has never reached that number, so.
I was looking at, you're averaging six to 13 hours a week depending. So, I just wanted to see if you would like, you know, some extra hours added or.
Well, that, that's good to know, because I mean, because I, because we were talking, we've talked over the years about, about having whoever it is do more of the subcommittees. And that would obviously add a whole bunch of hours, especially during budget times, so.
Counselor Adams, I know you've been waiting.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just agreed with the hiring on the two cost analysis of what it is around the area. The intent, we raised, oh, three years ago, two years ago, we raised the line item as far as the funding, and she hasn't come close to it. And the intent was to have the chairs utilize her for subcommittees and just as a confirmation. So, but, obviously played a pretty important part of the do, and I think it's, it's worth looking into and support.
Unfortunately, with Mary, she's just wasn't available. Like, anytime I need, when we, when we need, I needed her, she wasn't available. So, you know, we just made do with what we had. But I agree overall that, you know, it would be nice to have that person on standby every once in a while to do these meetings, because they can't be long. That way, you can be more engaged with what's going on.
There always was an idea of possibly hiring a second person to back her up, but that never happened. I think it was advertised.
It was. I don't think we got applicants for it.
Never went anywhere.
Very hard positions.
It was hard just to get her.
True, true.
Alright, any other discussion? Any other questions on this particular, other than the recording clerk? Okay. So, we, do we have, we have a motion in a second on the Town Council.
Yes.
Budget as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, recommending the council? All those opposed? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number five, review the fiscal year 2023 Town Manager Budget in the total amount of $317,697 and entertain a motion to submit to Town Council. Do I have a second? Anyone have any questions or comments? Counselor Steves.
Okay, a couple of items. Um, one is, the line label is car allowance. I thought, I thought we got rid of that. Or am I thinking of the other way around? Is this, this is, trying to figure out how we set this up, because when we changed it, I know you, the previous manager drove a town car. And is this, is this covering, you know, his own car? I don't remember how he did it, how he changed it.
I, I, in my contract, I drive my own car, but I get a mileage around as a monthly basis.
And that's what this is. Just clarifying. And also, let's see here. Does the salary in waiters first line there, the 51, the 511 line, 511,000 line, does that include the, the contract changes that we just voted for you?
I believe so, and it covers the new, the new HR folks as well. And the, the, my assistant and the confidential clerks, they're full-time in the.
That includes the HR, because it's a separate HR budget.
Oh, alright. We did pull it up, I'm sorry.
And I assume that the, the fact that it's down is basically primarily because of his retirement, right?
Right.
Oh, and also with the dues and subscriptions, didn't we recently have to increase that line to fulfill your ICMA subscriptions? Does that inclu, is that included in the, the jump from 1,500 to 1,900?
Yes.
It is.
Makes sense.
Alright, any questions?
Just about the one, the only other line is the printing line, which we had 32 bucks in 2021. It's been zeroed out. Why do we even keep it? I guess that's the course of the car.
It's at the bottom of the first page for the.
Yeah, the printing line. It's been zeroed for a couple of years now.
Right, it's just because the, the items came over from KVS and Communists that way, and they show up even though it's zero, and we have to manually go through and delete all of these lines. And I just, I just chose to let those leave.
Fair enough.
It's also good to have the line in case we do have to do some, some unexpected printing. One of those things that can happen.
It can, yes.
Are you, is that the last question, Counselor Steves, or are you all set?
And what is DP supplies?
Yeah, thank you.
It's the line label.
It's down 100%?
VP supplies.
54220. Oh, data process.
I believe that the Town Manager's Office gets most of that through their copier contracts.
Okay, it's zeroed out, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Citizen Member Clements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in looking at salaries and wages and such on page one, could you just explain the Town Manager's salary? I mean, exactly what is he at now? Because honestly, with the last extension of his contract, I don't recall hearing the numbers that it included the substantial increase in the pay. So, are we saying we add these two together to get his overall price now? His overall contract pricing? Is that, what I'm, I'm looking at these pays. I see 71 to 98, and I see 99 to 630, 23. Is that what that means? If I just add these guys together and we're at 170,000, 171,000? Is that correct?
It should be 71, yeah. Although, the, the date, the dates should be different, because that should have kicked in as of when we, when we approved it.
Yes.
Because it's, because it does say 71 and 99 here.
Well, as I said, that agenda item didn't list, it listed an extension of the Town Manager's contract, and it did not list to the public, to the taxpayers who pay that bill, that that extension came with a substantial increase, automatic, a quick increase to the Town Manager's salary. So, I just wanted to make sure that that is knowledgeable, just because you have a negative 3.78. As we said, Ms. Tortis retired, and, yeah, that was a higher, a higher overall salary. She'd been here a long time. But I think it's important that people realize how much we're paying in salaries all over the place. And in this case, the 171 is a lot higher than what the original number was for Town Manager. So, it's not what we advertised for originally, and now we're already there in less than two years. So, we're already at a high number. 171,000 is a lot of money. Just pointing it out. I have to speak my mind on this, because I was not pleased on that agenda item. I found that was... Anyway.
Any other further comments or questions? Counselor Marquetti.
Uh, thank you, Thru You. We did redo the Town Manager's contract, because the counselors wanted some, they wanted to extend his contract, so there was some negotiations involved. I have no problems with people knowing how much he's making. It is kind of in line with the other towns throughout the area, how much Town Managers are making. So, that's, so that's the, I don't know if it's an explanation, but that's what happened with that. They just wanted some stability in the position. They wanted to extend it. So, there's some negotiations that took place. Absolutely, I have no problem with residents knowing how much pay he's making. Uh, the other thing is, again, with the conferences and meetings, I, I'm looking at all of them, and I'm thinking that maybe some of them can be reduced, because I don't see, I just don't see the, the need really to go for this much, to be going to these conferences and meetings. However, if, there's an explanation, a lot of costs a lot to make, and it's a good idea to go. But other, for the Town Manager, whoever else is using this, to go to these meetings, then that, I'd like to hear them. Otherwise, I just would like to see some of them cut back a little bit. And it may be more than just you going to these meetings. There are really no others. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, typically, I only go to the MMA. The only thing that I would say is, I would just reserve some money so that our new HR director slash assistant manager can go as well. It's dues and subscriptions as opposed to, excuse me, units of conferences and meetings. There are some from time to time that I do. Some of them are sponsored. We can look at that, and maybe a way to shave that down.
Alright, I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, I appreciate it, thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, yeah, I just want, I, I appreciate Counselor Marquetti's explanation, I still find it to have been, um, very relevant that when you take a vote to extend a contract, you should have, the, the people should have known that it wasn't just a vote to extend a contract, it was a vote to give an instant raise. And to the point of what other towns are paying, I don't disagree, but train's coming. Um, however, we did not go out and search for town managers in that range and that could have opened up a, a, a larger pool. Just saying, not saying against Mr. McColl, just saying, that's not what, that's not how it was handled. So had we started in these ranges, you could have had people with lots of town manager experience and stuff who could have lived closer, so. Okay, next seven. It should have been, that's.
Any other further questions or discussions on the town manager budget as a whole? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor recommending the council? All those opposed, unanimous and all present. Agenda item number six, review the fiscal year 2023 accountant budget in the total amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and entertain a motion to submit to council as presented.
Submit.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the accountant budget?
Quick comment, it's actually a pretty low, pretty low increase, given everything. I mean, I, I think it's actually interesting how many, how many of our sub-budgets are actually decreases or very low increases? Yet, and yet the entire town budget has jumped significantly. I think a lot of it has to do with insurance costs and stuff like that, certainly fuels and stuff like that, so.
So our bodies in the town.
Counselor Marquetti?
Um, no, that's.
Just trying to know how it's supposed to be.
Uh, you're all done?
Yeah.
Um. I, I guess not, I was just looking again at the conference meetings and, and looking at how, how much it costs to go to these, these different, uh, conferences.
They do, they do provide a, a good one for two employees, CPA status there, thank you for the description, I'd love this for the accountant budget, nice. Any other further questions?
I have a follow-up to, to you, Karen, um, as I recall from, was it last year? Your assistant was still on the track, was working toward, um, like full accountant status or something like that, wasn't she?
Right, and then, um, we've changed the assistant account, now Ms. Russell is the assistant and she went for her first time this year in March. So she has to work at a certain number, I think it's maybe like three years. And then with her education and attending the schools, yes, she's on track to become certain.
You know, as far as conferences go, Mr. Mar, uh, Counselor Marquetti, i, i, I have to tell you, for me personally as a counselor, and we've had this discussion over the years, I found them quite invaluable, now that, of course, if you attend meetings and you go and you learn, you know, I learned about, uh, uh, the water mitigation and, you know, I went to DVW ones, I went to all kinds of different seminars that they offer and, and the people that I was with generally went to meetings and such. Can't say that for everybody, there are times you never saw people, now whether they're just going to Boston for, you know, to enjoy a couple nights in Boston, I don't know. But if you utilize the, what that conference is for, as a counselor at least, and in this case, obviously, these are professionals, they're going for accreditations, maybe they're going for their trainings. But, um, as a counselor, you could learn a lot, uh, from, from the conferences, so it's a small amount, you know, counselors don't get paid, counselors put in a lot of hours, if you wanna get better and understand open meeting laws and all that other stuff, it's a great opportunity and, and I think, I may, so I actually paid and went myself when I wasn't a counselor the following year, I just found it very, very informational, so, um, just saying, like, I, twenty-five hundred dollars compared to the other numbers that we see in this budget isn't a lot of money to put aside for that kind of training, so that's how you utilize it though, and people have to police themselves on that.
Always trouble.
We are trying to make some cuts here and there, so.
Mm-hmm, oh, no, I appreciate the fact that you're trying.
We can do it, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the recommending the accountant budget? All those opposed, unanimous and all present. Agenda item number seven, review the fiscal year 2023 assessor budget in the total amount of two hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and entertain a motion to submit to council as presented.
Second.
All right, does anyone have any questions on the assessors budget? Counselor Steves?
Hello, um, first off, just, I think it's just a print, a typo here, under salaries and wages permanent where it talks about Francine, it's, it lists here two percent COLA and step seven, but then it says step four and step five, as far as I know, we only have five steps.
Last year she was moved to a class, class seven, I think, not step. Yeah.
So that's a typo. Yeah, because I didn't read seven, so. Okay, and so that's just a typo, um, also, I was curious, the GIS mapping thing, that's still being shared with planning, isn't it?
Correct, yes, there's a fee for like the annual service that they cover and the minds for the updates.
Right, okay, okay, and I was curious, why do the elected and appointed, um, assessors get paid? And I know, I know by law, the, uh, the election registrars have to get paid, um, but nobody else, none of the other boards and commissions get paid. I don't think anybody does that. The, the salaries for elected, for, um, Diane Koskowska and, um, Grace Busquet and Rachel, they get paid for doing, for doing, being the board of assessors, as well as, in her case, being the assessor.
Madam Chair, sometimes there are statute requirements, I don't, uh, Madam Court, they know, but I believe, for instance, the registrar is supposed to get by statute some compensation.
Yeah, I saw that.
I'm not familiar with the assessors, but my guess would be there's a lot of cities and towns have done with, um, segments for appointed elected, usually the only ones remaining are the ones that require that.
Any other questions or comments for this budget?
All right, uh, one more question, sorry, um, it mentions here about needing to get a, a black and white printer for small and confidential print jobs. Now, we've said several of them already in the office.
No, we have none.
No?
Yeah. We have one big black and white printer, uh, excuse me, color printer, um, but the, each, uh, it doesn't function quite properly, it's fairly slow and the toner is just like six different, maybe five, but they're like three hundred all in piece. It's quite old, it's the only printer in our office. My claims to not order ink for that, or cartridges, because they're so expensive.
That makes sense.
And replace, we have, um, a beam and certificate forms, I recommend a special paper, so currently what we're doing is we have to print them, hand-cut them, photocopy them, because we need more, because right now it's printing our two pages, I don't know, another topic. So I want to get the forms and have us designated, and then if we have special confidential stuff that we don't want to be sending to the common room, we have that available, so I think with one printer, we'll be able to do that, um, and eliminate the, the beast.
That makes sense, do, do any, does anybody else use the beast?
We're the only ones who can, I believe it's not, it's networked for my office, but I don't believe for the building.
Are you, are you referring to the one that's over in that little, the little off, the little storage space in there, is that the one you're referring to?
There's my printer and that.
No, because I know that, that's, isn't that, isn't that accessible like everybody in town hall?
Oh, in the copy room, that's the one that we use, so, so we, you know, if you have confidential things that we're printing and, and sometimes, you know, I'm in my office on the other side of the room, I can't hear it print, I'm still doing other things and it's there and then I go in and it's on the table, so I'm see, yeah, it's just confidential, so I'd like to have that ability to be able to print those things in a secure office.
Okay. Has that ever been an issue of people taking confidential stuff, do you know?
Oh, accidentally, not intentionally, I've picked up building apartments things, I don't know how many times, I can build anywhere, it's gonna like, oop, shoot, from that. So it happens, I mean, you just, you know, there's.
All right, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, unanimous and all present. Agenda item number eight, review fiscal year 2023 treasurer collector budget in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and entertain a motion to submit to the town council as presented.
Submit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any other que, do we have any questions or comments on this budget?
Yeah, the only one line one I have is under surety bonds, it mentions an additional bond financing, how many, how many people in that office are bonded?
Three.
Three.
All right, any further questions or comments on this budget? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, unanimous and all present. Agenda item number nine, review the fiscal year 2023 town attorney budget in the total amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars and recommend, and entertain a motion to recommend to town council as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any questions, comments, Counselor Steves?
Um, I noticed that so far we've only done sixty-three thousand this year and a lot of that is because of the manager doing a lot of the, a lot of the legwork first. Um, I'm just curious, do you think that, wh, I know we keep putting in the hundred and seventeen five, um, what do you think the, the real probabilities of actually even reaching that this year are? Because we haven't come close to that in a while, which is good.
A great answer, I mean, there's, we, as you may know, um, we use different counsel for different things.
Sure.
Our, our primary counsel is KP Law, we have Nate Talamanacosta handles some of our specials for liquor and a few other things, and then we've used Jeremy Caprara for, uh, local real estate and he represents the inspections.
And he's, he's retiring.
Yes, so.
Look at that email, yeah.
And actually, I do have to contact him, we, we do benefit from him for a variety of reasons, because he's, he is local and he gives us a, a very competitive rate here. I spoke with Mr. Pelletier because he primarily, Mr. Attorney Caprara works primarily for inspections, doing some of their enforcement actions and things, he goes to Dudley District Court. What I, I have now come to understand is Mr. Caprara is resigning because he wants to focus on other areas and some other areas of his practice. However, if maybe we could appoint him as a special counsel only for inspections, I'd, I'd like to believe he may continue if he was narrowly tailored to what we use him for, so I, I do owe him a phone call, we only had that, uh, conversation, Mr. Pelletier and I earlier this week, which would allow us to continue to save some money using local counsel rather than having somebody else, who will have to go out and look for somebody if, if that, that doesn't work out. Most of the, the contracts and things that we've had so far, minimal assistance from KP Law, been able to, um, keep the budget down, I do owe them that. I will say right now, we have all of our collective bargaining agreements open and, you know, with the use of, you know, whatever reason one of them doesn't get resolved and then probably you wind up resorting to, you know, an mediation or arbitration or something, that's generally when, um, your legal costs are due. So there's no way really killing, uh, and I think we, we discussed this last year, or at the end of last year, coming to FY twenty-two, the actuals were lower than what was budgeted, it's just, it's, it's kind of like snow and ice and other things, you, you just, you, you put a number in there and you hope not to exceed it and, um, you do get any of these unused funds back in, you, in your free cash. I, I just don't know, I would hate to say reduce it to seventy-five thousand and then something come in, or, you know, you never know where you could wind up having a loss. The other thing that we do, um, depending upon the nature of a claim or suit that can come, we wrote to our insurance companies because we'll let the insurance attorneys take care of it rather than the, the folks who'll be paid for by the hour, so. Again, it's, it's, most things it's hard to tell. It's not a good answer, but.
Okay, well, that makes sense, why do you want?
I know in the past I brought up this one in particular because I've looked at the past years, we have never come close to spending the full amount.
Not in the last several years.
I would be fine even if we just lowered it to a hundred K, like, why does it be, have to be a hundred and seventeen five?
That's a weird dollar.
Wouldn't you ever even got close to a hundred, why not just do a five eleven, one hundred, call it a day?
Oh, I think we have in the past, but.
But I mean, we're not dealing with, you, I, I think you're talking about landfill, a lot of landfill stuff, which.
Well, that, that was special, that was.
Yeah, that was a lot special.
But, yeah, I was thinking that too, and those, those years are, the bills are very high unnecessarily, so. So we're seeing a huge difference and it's making a huge difference, so I appreciate that, because of your work.
Counselor Marquetti, I think you had your hand up.
Good, good.
Well, I think that we should ask the town manager to find out how much to keep, um, Counselor Caprara on for just the specialized services and then when this comes to the town council, maybe this can be reduced, seventy-five thousand is not a bad, not a bad number.
Seventy-five eighty, something like that.
I know, you can't guarantee.
Seventy-five thousand, I'd say.
Not a bad number.
I was just saying, I, I, you know, sixty-nine. It's like an auction, if you're a lower number shoe back.
Two thousand.
All right, any, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous and all present. Agenda item number ten, review the fiscal year 2023 human resources budget in the total amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and entertain a motion to submit to council as presented. Do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
I actually, I have a specific question on this one that stepped up to me, that's a very low number for recruitment, that's a very low number, why only six hundred? What recruitment services uses?
Because we've been able to, um, leverage other, uh, re, uh, recruitment, um, dashboards that are free, so we've been able to utilize like Mass Hire and Handshake and the so we, we've been, uh, able to attract, um, and, and good hires, so that's why I kept the recruitment number so low.
Well, I, I specifically asked on that one because we ha, we just had this discussion about how we couldn't find qualified people who wanted to do good record, recording clerks. Is there a way we could be aver, doing paid advertisements in key areas?
We do, and that's why it's so low, um, we advertise through, um, municipal, um, HR, there's dashboards and you, you'll find all types of municipal uh, positions there and that's where that number is.
How much is a job posting usually?
Uh, seventy-five, so that's, uh, the equivalent of six job postings.
Okay. And how long do the postings last?
Thirty days.
That's really low.
Yeah.
Uh, normally it's a sixty to ninety day average.
Thirty days.
That's really low, okay, so really, if you, sometimes you need that sixty days to get a good quality candidate, so you really could only have like three postings twice.
For a special position like that, yes, but not normally.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know, thank you. Any other further questions? Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, through you, I was just wondering what miscellaneous expenses in sentence with that line as well.
Well, we can, Ms. Ravenna and I can both talk about it, um. Obviously, I'm very excited that we have her and Ms. Donidero, Ellie Donidero works with her, um. One of the things that we really thought about doing here, which I didn't see when I came here, um, there were little things that are in other municipalities that people have done. We have outstanding employees and I, without naming names, I can tell you that there are employees who have caught, uh, fraud and other things, attempted fraud on the town and saved this town lots of money, or, um, caught at the last minute something that wasn't filed appropriately and have done, you know, uniso, you know, not every day of the week, but every now and then you isolated, uh, above and beyond, uh, above and beyond the call type of, uh, tasks. And in other towns, sometimes you would get some type of recognition, maybe you get a gift card for a hundred dollars, you could go out with your significant other, especially if you stayed late that night to fix that problem, um, in other towns, they often will have, sometime in the summer, they'll have essentially an outing where the s, the staff gets maybe burgers and dogs served by the department heads as a way to, you know, appreciate your employees. maybe burgers and dogs served by the department heads as a way to, you know, appreciate your employees, and I've noticed that elsewhere, and I didn't notice it here, and so, eh, one of the first things when we talked about what we can do around here to improve morale, almost simultaneously, we, we talked about our employee recognition program, and a lot of this was going to go towards, if you had, uh, maybe a summer outing and winter outing, for, you know, we provided some type of luncheon for all the employees and the other police and fire could come down as well, but then, uh, a hundred dollars or so a month where you could recognize somebody who was doing an outstanding job, and, you know, that was the intent when we discussed it, we came to that number, uh, based on having, you know, occasional monthly awards and went to events to recognize employees and that is.
That's perfect.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments on this one? Seeing none, do we have a motion in the second, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Agenda item number eleven, review the fiscal year 2023 town clerk budget in the total amount of two hundred and three thousand and three hundred and thirteen dollars and entertain a motion to present to town council as presented.
Right.
Do we have any questions, comments on the town clerk budget?
See, Maddie, she's back in the corner, she usually.
I'm just gonna say, um, I say it every year, so it's not gonna be a surprise. Um, I've been coming here now s- to these meetings for seven, eight years.
Seven, eight.
And every year, Maddie has come up and asked for this step increase.
Yeah, absolutely.
And every year, she has been denied, every single goddamn year, and it makes me kind of mad, because every single year we have this debate, and i- it's, it's still not happening, we're seeing all this creation of new departments, and yet we can't even move someone up to the next step, or the ne- the ne- yeah, the next step, because at the max, when they've been there.
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years, and at this step, the last seven or eight years, at least in my perspective here. You know, I just, I continue to think that's wrong, um, it's only a grand, and a couple grand, some change, but that's a sign, again, you want to talk about rewarding the people who've been here in retention? That's retention, that's somebody who's been here and given to this community for twenty-six years, and I still think it's really unfair that we're having this debate again. That's all I have to say, I'll be voting against this budget as it is, thank you. Any other questions or comments, citizen member Shay?
I said the same thing last year, I'm gonna say again this year, um, if she would, were to leave us, we would pay the new person more money. That always drives me crazy, I see it all the time in the school department. We're paying this teacher this much, but in order to recruit another math teacher, or another, some other kind of a teacher, we have to pay more money. We put them a signing bonus of three thousand dollars to get them to come. We got somebody good, more than a hot dog.
So, I guess the only point of information is, it's not a position that reports to me, it's an elected position, it's not a recruited position.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no signing bonus, there's, it's actually, the, the pay is determined by, under the charter, by the council, not by.
Right.
Well, that's something for us.
We need to talk to the council.
Well, it's, that's something we can discuss at council, when it goes up for the full budget discussion. Councillor Marketti?
I find it's hard to believe, but I have to agree with you on this one.
Heads explode.
Wow, can I just wave them, can I just laugh?
I think, I think Maddie has a pretty hard job, especially in the election this year, we have three, three elections going on.
During COVID, I might add, and while other towns messed up, she did them right.
True.
So I would agree, I would say, rather than vote no, just make an amendment to it, but understand that when it goes up, it would have to be a two.
I'm talking about tonight, because we can't make changes.
We can make changes.
We can recommend.
We can make.
We can make changes, but it would have to still have a two-thirds vote.
That's true.
Yes, that's true.
So, just make the recommendation, rather than vote no.
All right, then.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right, do we have a second to that? Or do who, the person who seconded it accept that as friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So then that would make.
So that would move her up to A nine, step one, eighty-five, two oh seven, which would be an increase.
Two thousand one hundred and six, seven?
Thirteen dollars.
Two thousand and fifteen.
That would increase her, her budget to four point nine percent.
Mm-hmm. Two thousand one hundred and fifteen years.
All right, thank you.
So that's, so that grand total is two thousand and five, two hundred and five thousand four hundred and twenty-six, if I'm calculating correctly? That, is that what you do?
Perfect.
Two hundred and five thousand four hundred and twenty-six for this, for this one?
All right. All right, do we have any other discussion on this agenda? On this budget?
Right, I'm checked.
Yes.
What's the motion on the table?
To recommend the budget as amended at two oh five.
Four twenty-six.
Four twenty-six to increase her ma- um, Maddie, Maddie Bonadie's is step to A nine, step one.
Okay, the only question I have, not opposed or against or for, or maybe, can you do that stuff?
We're just making a recommendation.
We're recommending, the council still has to approve.
I understand it would be a recommendation, are you voting for the current, what town manager's proposing right now, with you bringing it up at the town council, the amendment itself?
Whatever you guys want to do, I'm fine with taking, making it here and letting, actually, I'm kind of, I would rather do it here, cause then we send a clear message that we want this changed. We're just recommending, you can change it back, it's still gonna require two-thirds majority at council, we're just recommending that this needs to increase.
What I'm just saying is, I understand you recommend.
Well, the catch is though, if we, if we were to, if we were to find twenty-one hundred and twelve bucks from some o- someplace else, the total line item would still be the s- the total line would still be the same.
Well, that's not.
I'm not necessarily talking, not, that's necessarily have to be in this budget, but the grand total budget is still the same.
Yeah, so, can I just clarify real quick? The, the line item itself will stay the same, obviously, the subcommittee right now, the majority, whether maybe, is in favor of the increase. That should be brought up at the town council meeting there, you could recommend all you want, but the thing is, are you recommending this budget? Or are you re- recommending your own changes to this budget? So I'm just asking, are you going to hear, because it, it still has to take the two-thirds vote of the town council, once you get up there, and you explain the difference, and it gives them time to take a look at if there's a feasibility, can, can that money be found in different ways, or whatever it may be.
So you could do it as a two situation, well, first off, you can vote any way you want on this budget, you could vote no, not to recommend it, and some of us could vote to recommend it, but then you could do, as you say, an, a, a, an amendment, or a line item that says, we ask the council to, you know, we vote, and is that recommended? So that the increase would be a singular thing. Should I say, I mean.
We could do it, you, you could do it as a singular, two separate, two separate motions. We can do that, right, that's true.
Yeah, the budget's gonna, you know, you're not gonna decrease anything, or if anything, what we're trying to get them to do is to increase, and we, it's highly recommended by the council, so, you know, you make a, you make a motion and to recommend that, and then what's the deal on that? Well, uh, subcommittee, five people, four people, whatever it was, that, that, that should be increased, I don't know.
I just, I feel like it would just be easier for me to go up and say, on this one, we made one change, as we were, we recommended one change act based on the vote we're taking here, which is to increase Madeline Bonadie's is step to A nine, step one, which is being recommended in the total amount, and we can read the total amount then, but still being presented, when John reads it, will be the original town manager budget, but when I go and give my recommendation, when he goes and says, okay, now let's turn to general government, I can say, well, we voted to actually recommend that we increase this.
Yeah, that would make sense.
So, that's why I wanted to do it as one.
Makes sense.
Councillor, in the past, what we've done sometime, there has been some recommendations from subcommittee
Yep.
that have gone through that are, that are different, and the town manager and myself have taken that into consideration, and we, the town manager could make an amendment to this budget and bring it up at the two oh five, I'm not saying that that's what will happen, but we could.
He just says to find the money, they usually go over and find out where the money is, huh?
And that, that would make it easier.
Mm-hmm.
If that happens, I'm not saying that that would, but it could.
Yeah, the amendment stands as is then, okay, yeah, I was pretty sure this has been a practice been done.
So I would say, if you want to recommend, vote without what you say.
Yeah, we usually cut, but originally can't add.
Yeah, and at the end, when, what's presented is what's presented, what the manager brings up is what the manager brings up, and if it's not there, then we can make the two-thirds motion, if it's there, then we don't have it, because he's taken the recommendation of subcommittee.
Exactly, that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, I thi- I, I say the amendment stands, any other further discussion?
You generally should find where that amendment's gonna come from. To say.
All those in favor? Those opposed, unanimous, all present.
Total elections.
Yes, review the fiscal year 2023 elections budget in the total amount of one hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and one dollars and entertain a motion to recommend the council. Do I have a motion in the second?
Second.
All right, any questions or discussions on this? Councillor Marketti?
Just, uh, Maddie's here, there's three elections this year, Maddie, right?
Mm-hmm, yes. It's not, this year, it's September, November, and then June, and then February.
Right, right.
Oh, that's right.
A, a quick question, um, the last time we did, um, early voting for a November election, um, how much did we, how much did it actually cost us?
It probably cost about November, November twenty, twenty?
I, I guess so, yeah.
That was the big, that was the big difference.
So that would be the, well, the closest equivalent, because that was a big one, but.
So, this year, they haven't told us how long we have to hold it.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty, it was, um, two weeks, almost two weeks, they haven't said what September is going to be yet for the November, so I don't really have kind of a dollar amount personally, but it was probably like eight thousand, two weeks, last November, well, quite right.
Any other questions? Ma- Ms. Shay?
While we're talking about, are we doing any extra security for the mail-in votes, knowing what's going on in the world?
Well, funny that you should ask, I, it's through the dress death armor, we've asked for a new box to go upfront, and it looks like we may be getting it, I'm not quite sure, it's, it's a small amount of money, so to be sure, the collector's office in.
Forget, the box is the box.
Yeah, but hopefully, and I'll keep the ballots dry too, as well as.
No comment.
All right, any other further questions or comments on the elections budget? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Oh, one fifty.
Yes. You know who's all present. Agenda item number thirteen, review the fiscal year 2023 cable budget in the total amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and entertain a motion to recommend to the town council as presented.
So.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions or comments from the committee on this budget? Councillor Steve?
Well, that's, well, actually, the, the only real question is, I know that most of the stuff, this has always been a pass-through from charter, but given where things stand as far as our charter negotiation, what, what does this look like going forward?
Oh, we're still having some difficulty with the negotiations.
I know, they, they're not cooperating at all, that's not my point.
Yeah, they're not negotiating.
Right, but they're under, they're obligated to continue with what they're paying now, they're on, they're.
And we need to receive our match as they.
Right. So the money is, so what you see, for instance, I shouldn't say that, go ahead.
Send me my bill.
Cause only because of the contract, that's what I'm thinking about it, but, so what you see from last year, eh, you know, it's not gonna go below that, because they're obligated, well, I guess if, uh, if we lost a whole lot of, uh, subscribers, it could go down, because they pay by subscriber, but the reality is, you know, it's, it's pretty stable, they're not yet.
Is there such a thing, eh, I know, eh, it's usually we get junk mail from regarding, um, energy, um, aggregation, is there such a thing as cable aggregation? I've never heard of it personally, but I don't know if it exists or not, so.
Currently, as things stand here, there just isn't another offer s- option.
That's part of the problem.
Now, granted, the government, federal law has said that there's soaking money into this type of problem, so that rural areas have more options.
Right.
Um, but until that happens, Spectrum's got the, you know, they got everybody by the, as we said.
Yes.
It would cost, uh, a competitor too much money to come to town and put up the infrastructure, that's why you, you, you get competition.
Right. Yeah, and unlike when you think of Verizon and how many people, eh, think of Spectrum with cell phone, they're using towers and stuff, so what would happen, you know, is there a capability or some deal that's made between somebody else who comes in and uses the infrastructure of Spectrum, who knows, I mean.
I would think that there would be some way to do that.
Anyway.
It can be expensive, as we mentioned.
I don't think Spectrum is that kind.
No.
No, they're, they're not enough for being nice against.
Well, I think that Verizon was told that a government they had to share, so, and, you know, at some point, if, one way that the government, you know, if they do,
Right, and that's.
you know, try to get services to the rural areas, that may be one easy way for them to do it.
Right.
Yeah, I know, sometimes if it's not econom- economically feasible, you know, I was in a condo complex one time, and it's, the Verizon would not go in there because it wasn't worth it, you know, put all the cable and all that, and get twelve subscribers or fifteen or.
The other thing that I, I've alu- mentioned a number of times, that I brought up to the state, um, and representatives who say there's, uh, bills or different things in the works supposedly, is to try to get our piece of the internet pie.
Right.
I mean, one of the things that really bothers me is the fact that everything we do is based on cable TV subscriptions,
True.
not on internet subscriptions and such, so therefore, how is that possible? That we have given the infrastructure and the whole base, for, you know, it all started as cable TV, and now there's internet, it's phone, there's all that coming from the same company within our community, or other communities, I mean, because they're, they're everywhere, and people aren't getting that portion like you're getting here from the subscribers, because as you know, two subscribers stop with the cable television, and they go to, um, you know, streaming, so they're using internet, and, so what about us? What about the town?
I totally get that, I mean, I, I have charter internet, I know, can't charge you.
Right, so those are things that, um, I know are being addressed somewhere, State House, different places, at least I've been told that, but it would be nice to get our piece of that pie to be there.
Yeah, that's, it's happening, you know, unfortunately, cutting, cutting the cord, I know, we're not during COVID, some people were cooped up at home, but.
Is that a question on the budget, or was, cause I, I'll look after it, um, I'm assuming that the fringe benefits had to do with the fact that Max is in here? Is that possi- is that, eh, I'm not assuming currently.
Yes.
The forty-five percent reduction, and the long, obviously longevity.
Yeah, since he's. Yeah, since he reti- he retired, and then, as you know, was working part-time, but now has completely left the town hall.
Right.
Unfortunately, but.
Right, okay.
So that, that was the big difference there.
I'm also looking, and I, and I'm gonna, you know, knowing what I know with cable, having full disclosure that I'm a lone member of some committee. An advisor, um, I look at our actual spend, I look at our original budget, I look at, um, you know, so clearly we didn't spend, uh, we haven't spent at all, and the cables, the cable department has been low on help for quite some time.
Absolutely.
And they just got a bunch of, of applications, so that's good, however, eh, we threw them in, we'll be lucky if we get, you know, one or two. I say that because, uh, last year, I, I, I see that there's money, there's still money left over, because certainly you can't use uh, all the money if you don't have workers taking the paycheck. And I bring this up today because I didn't go to, I was surprised when things changed, I didn't go to the council meeting after the EHS meeting that discussed changes, salary changes and such, um, it was discovered, and I petitioned to the town manager last year, that, uh, Jim, um, only had three steps, not five, and if you recall.
We made that change.
You made the changes, however, they weren't effective now, so, and I understand that there's an anniversary date to that, however, there's two steps involved, because he's eligible for his fifth step, so what I didn't understand is why he couldn't have gotten his fourth step immediately, so he could start seeing in his, in his paycheck, and then come July or whenever it is, um, get that fifth step on his anniversary date, and I'm bringing it up because you're all, you know, there's counselors here, and you guys can hash it out maybe, or talk to the town manager, because I think it's, uh, after what, um, what was discussed last fall and waited until spring to finally take, um, action on, the reason it even came up was because of the things that Cable was doing to help during COVID. In other words, there were extended, extenuating circumstances in terms of time, nights, days, uh, hybrid meetings, all kinds of things, and it seemed to be a consensus among counselors even that, you know, Cable was, was pulling on, getting things done for them, and they. And they, you know, and so when it came up that Jim didn't, you know, the numbers weren't there, I advocated for Jim with the town manager. And I thought there was a rainbow, you know, at the end of this, since last October till now. And instead, he's now told he has to wait till July. So there's money, he was owed his fourth step. I just, just bringing it up in case y'all want to amend anything, I mean, not amend anything, but y'all want to do something and ask for that change to take effect immediately, at least the fourth step. That's just my, as we're talking about the budget, um, that's why I said.
Yeah, that's honestly, yeah, because I remember having that long discussion, yeah.
So y'all didn't know that didn't happen, okay. So, and I wasn't there to advocate that night, so I didn't realize it either until after the fact. And it was disappointing for me, having, you know, kind of gone through the system. Maybe it's just a little oversight situation, I don't really know, but I'm not saying, if it's got to wait till the anniversary for the fifth, that's fine. But the fourth step should have been applied to the next paycheck and so forth.
Money is.
Enough said, it's a council thing. All right.
Thank you for hanging up.
That's great, thank you.
If we're talking about money and salaries, it's inappropriate.
Oh, yes. Can you just identify yourself, please?
Francine Farland is a resident, I mean, I work here, but I'm speaking as a resident. Because you were talking about cable access in a contract, whatever, cable, spectrum, whatever they call. So, my thing is, I pay, I think it's six dollars and ninety-five cents for three French channels a month. And there are over fifty or, I don't know how many hundred, whatever, hundred and fifty Spanish channels that are free. So I just have an issue with the fact that there are so many channels that are free for the Spanish community. I'm not, you know, second, you know, upset with that, that community. I'm just saying as a French-speaking person, to try and keep her heritage language, I, I have to pay extra. So I'm just, and there's only three choices, three channels. So I'm just saying, oh, and with the negotiations, if you're offering French, I mean, Spanish, they should offer French as well for free. So.
That's interesting.
That's actually never, never, that's new one on me.
No, that makes sense, but it has to be a community.
They may be Albanians soon.
Or Polish.
Polish, I mean, I'm like, yeah, I'm sure there go, there are Poles in that community. I don't know if they're, how many of them speak Polish, but there are some.
Sorry, we kind of drifted off subject, yes.
All right, do we have any other, guys, sorry.
So just, so as far as, as far as the budget goes anyway, what you were just referring to about Jim's going to step four, that would be something that we would do for this calendar year, this, this current fiscal year, as opposed to.
Yeah, I would have liked to seen him and he would have liked to seen himself get his raise just recently because we had been asking all this during this, this budget year because of, again, all the things that had happened from twenty and twenty-one and all that. And a lot of nights and weekends and stuff and trying to keep programming on the air, which is his job. But certainly, when you looked at the step situation, it seemed fair, I hate to use that word, it's a four-letter word in my book usually. But it seemed appropriate, so I'll use that word.
Right.
And as I said, I was surprised when it didn't go through, and I grant it, it's going through for July and he's going to five. From my understanding, I could be wrong, but it just seems like you should have got the four, you should have gotten to the four. And there was enough money to, to take care of it. We've been so understaffed in that respect, so.
Because right, right, in our budget book, it's labeled as, it's labeled as step three, which is what it's currently at.
That's what he's at, right, so they, you added the two steps and I, I guess I was just, I was playing.
But it doesn't, it doesn't show, it doesn't show any jump, it just says step three.
Go for the next one, I believe. You read, I didn't pay attention. Oh, let me flip the page, sorry. I'm looking at the first page, you should have flipped the page.
Yeah, we're supposed to take place in June.
I mean, so many of the other ones will say step three for such and such a date and then step four for some other date.
Yeah, so it didn't even.
In most cases, they do, but he suddenly mentioned step three as a standard thing.
Do I see a step four?
Because it, because it never, the budget, the budget never accounted for the fact that we made the change to add step four and five to the cable.
Interesting.
I think.
That'll be something that town manager will have to address. I don't, that I can't tell.
Yeah, because that wasn't going to take, going to take place until.
Although, although the next one, cable production system two says step five, which is weird, something's missing.
I know, that's. Something's not quite right, maybe that's supposed to be up there.
Any other, first? Any other further questions or comments on the budget? Or? No?
I think otherwise, uh, it's not right, wouldn't.
Yeah, we, as, as she had mentioned, we are, we do have some applicants for the, to replace Max. Because, yeah, it's, we've been quite busy and as you, we found out last night.
Right.
You know, we, I was completely alone last night, but we got through it. And, but that was just a miscommunication, but, but yes, we've, you know, it's, we have been quite, quite a bit behind. But we're, we're working together, myself and Lynn and Mark Arf and, but it's been a bit of a stretch.
So that would be filling one of these cable production, production system one slots that are here?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think there are two job, two job applications, right, if this, yeah.
Yeah, there's two. One's labeled cable production system one and one says per diem cable production system.
Right, that's something they talked about as per diem speaking.
They get the same thing on it.
Because you might be able to get people who are willing to work Monday nights or Thursday night, you know, or something like that. And we just need some flexibility in that office. Also, if you could bring some people in like that, then maybe they'll, they'll fill into a more permanent position, but.
Right, right.
So we did, that's something that the town manager worked on and discussed and worked with Karen to make sure that we could come up with some sort of per diem situation. Just saying.
That'll be a big help.
Okay.
Matt, Matt, Chair, I, I actually just checked the, the rate for Mr. Crowsgrove to the schedule of one. And actually, as a typo, that is step four that's listed in there at twenty-eight thirty-seven, so I just want to let you know it's not a step three.
Okay, okay. So in that, in that case, and so if you were to do step four at, listen, if, if we were to do step four starting now, would he jump up to step five in, would that become step five effective in July or?
No, it would normally be a year from now, and on his anniversary date.
What, what is, what's his anniversary date, Jim?
No, those are.
He would get the cola though, in July.
He's already at the fourth step, it's just an error in the step.
No, he's at the third step.
Third.
Yeah, he gets, he gets step four starting July one with that two percent included in that step.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other.
But he's supposed to be getting.
Was supposed to take place in June, but we're hoping to try to take place earlier than our second.
But you're, you're, you're a roller with dates in June.
Yes, yeah, my anniversary is in June and then the cola would be in July. But we're hoping to have it occur earlier, as you mentioned.
Okay.
It's almost May.
That was the. Okay, okay.
Any other discussion on the cable budget as presented? Seeing none, all those in favor of recommending as presented? All those opposed, unanimous of all present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Review the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three administration budget in the total amount of six hundred and seven thousand, five hundred, and entertain a motion to submit that the council has presented.
So moved.
Second.
Great. Any questions? I mean, obviously, it seems we have big increases in this one other, but it seems to be all inflation related due to the energy costs, it seems.
Right. Although, one thing I, one thing I forgot from previous years is the postage, which we have never moved all forty-five thousand of those on end for years and years running. And quite honestly, I don't recall seeing transfers out of postage to do something else. It just kind of sits there and rolls over into pre-catch, actually.
We got thirty-eight in twenty twenty-one, and isn't there?
It's twenty, twenty, twenty thousand five, this is so far.
But that's so far, so we still have another, almost like.
Sure. But I mean, but we would, we don't even, I don't recall even seeing clearing forty, maybe once in the last like five years.
Any other questions or comments on this budget?
Any concept of cutting that to forty? I'm not surprised we don't have.
Matt, I'm sure, I would, there, there's being postage increases, aren't there?
There's more postage increases coming. I think you don't see it be fully depleted because I know for our office, we're farming out a lot of that now. So we use our deputy collector for more, more of our mailings because frankly, they can just do it cheaper. So we are doing that more. I, I would hesitate to slash it too much just because it's always nice to fall back. But you're right, if we see that next year we're still not using it to its full capacity, we could start decreasing it maybe in increments and see how that works.
This isn't the first time. I know we brought this up like the last three or four years, though it's not, it's been a forty-five grand, it's never been close.
It's never.
So I'd, I'd be fine with forty, honestly, as well.
Okay. And that covers, that covers the change we just made in Maddie's salary. And that's it.
I, I just want to be unrighted and say that I don't think we should go that far. I mean, slashing it five thousand dollars and it was thirty-eight, back in twenty-one.
Right.
I think there was another increase.
I think there's an increase coming.
Sorry, just inquire out of my own. How much postage would be owed to the clerks in an election cycle, will be a town election, primary? Elevate your budget this year unusually? With mail-in ballot, you know, mailing out.
Right, if they, well, in twenty twenty, it was just passed around, we mailed out so many. And it's seventy-something cents each envelope, so it is sweet.
And I was trying to, you know, play with, I was just thinking out loud, as you're reducing it, that because it's an election cycle and more and more people, you know, ask for ballots to be mailed to them, would that come into play? And I didn't know if you have a second, I didn't.
No, I just, I just tell.
So you would come out of this administrative book, yeah?
I think we've had that conversation before.
Probably have. I'm actually, while, while you were commenting, I called up a recent, a recent posting from, from April, April seventh. Talks about postal service increasing the price of stamps by two cents every six months beginning July. The increase will raise first-class mail prices approximately six and a half percent, which is still lower than the annual inflation rate, which is almost eight percent, but is the highest single-year jump since nineteen eighty-two. This cost of stamps increased last year from fifty-five to fifty-eight. If the latest increase is approved, it'll mark a nine percent increase in less than. Okay. All right. And that, and of course, going overseas, which I don't think we do a whole lot of, would go up even higher, so. By two thousand and twenty-three, they're saying the cost of stamps will be sixty-two cents, then sixty-four cents in July twenty-three.
So you're making a change, or you are making a change, what's the?
I mean, there's not been a motion made to make a change, so.
Unfortunately, given that, given the way it looks like they're going, it probably should be with them.
Yeah.
All right. Any other further discussion on this, Counselor Marquess?
So the heating fuel is going up almost eighty-three percent?
Yes, pretty much.
Fuel and oil is going up one hundred percent, yeah? And that's because of the cost of gasoline, fuel and oil.
Well, we can. I'll talk to this hardly place on the numbers that we're working on to negotiate. We submitted some things this week because I, I sent an email to the council last week. And the one week when we first, we're talking at a council, it jumped up ten to fifteen percent, the price of natural gas, the commodity. And, and there's a whole matrix, as I showed you, you know, who you go with, if you go with a short contract, long contract. And they kept going up every day this week, so we put in a bid and we're working this hard with to see what the impact would be. When we originally did this, I think he told us conservatively that we would see at least thirty percent or more of, of our price. And so I'm not sure how that will work out, what he would have ultimately, what it has come out to be. But I'm a little tired, I'm worried to get shot up, but we'll look at this, I'll see.
Any other questions or discussion on this budget, Counselor Steve?
As far as oil prices, they're suggesting that it's going to be high in the summer. They're saying, their, EIA is projecting it to drop after the summer and lower it in the fall. But some of their numbers have been hefty over the years, so who knows where it's going. Um.
Conservatively, it wouldn't be going up.
Exactly. But the EIA expects US drivers to face highest summer fuel prices in eight years.
So that Green New Deal started to look awful good.
Or we could be tapping into our strategic reserves a little bit more.
We already are doing that.
Reserves are for a reason, not when you already have what you could use.
They already are tapping into this.
They are already doing that, right, exactly. So it's like saying we're going to take our, our town reserves.
We release a combined two hundred and forty million barrels of oil from the strategic reserves.
No, I'm talking about our natural gas and petroleum reserves, do you see them access those more?
They're releasing a two hundred and forty million barrels of them from the strategic reserves.
We don't want to delete that completely because that's not wise either.
They're probably replacing it by, by around the, around the gun, rushing.
Take more out, we expect to reveal some, do it.
All right, any further discussions on the administration budget? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Correct.
Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number fifteen, review the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three data processing budget in the total amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars, and entertain a motion to recommend that the town council has presented.
Is that one?
Right. All right, anybody have any questions on this budget? Counselor Marquess.
So this is mostly because you want to hire an IT specialist, is that correct?
Yep.
The rest, the second part of your data processing is all different lines here. I'm just wondering how they, how do they correspond here to? There's an overall one forty-three, five, correct Karen, and then each line is added, or is that?
No, the overall is two thirty-nine and then one, each one under that is added up to the two thirty-nine cost.
Okay.
If that's correct, right?
Yes, and quite honestly, this is how the budget was last year. Because we didn't have anyone in the position known here with, really with the expertise. We figured that we would level fund it for the services, bring in an IT director, and then see where to go after that, maybe we can bring some of these costs down.
Right. It costs a hundred and forty-three thousand a year to do munis?
Tyler Tech Software is, you know, to use the expression, the Cadillac supposedly accounting software. The school systems adopted it first, which essentially forced, you, 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 when I say Cadillac, you're a different word for it. And the reason there's, I guess, we have had a lot of problems with the conversion to KDS, which have caused setbacks over here and significant frustration on the staff part. But yes, when my last community, when we went out to purchase licensing software, the pricing from Tyler Tech makes munis, is, they, they look at themselves differently. In my opinion is, here's everybody else, but you want us and it's going to cost you. The other is our managed service provider, we had it, we had Will. Will Canoria, as many people know, was our assessor, he also was seen as a stipend. He was more than just an occasional IT person, he really split his time between the two.
Right.
And the managed service provider is somebody who's around the clock, twenty-four, seven, help desk. Monitors our firewall, a lot of different things, so that even if we had an IT person here, they may still have the ability to log in. But there's always somebody monitoring in case something happens. And embedded in those costs are also some of the costs for our software because we have to pay a per-seat license fee for everybody who gets Outlook, Microsoft Outlook, so that you get access to the, the email and the other associated tools in the suite of Microsoft products. So every time we have somebody, we have to pay a licensing fee, and that's incorporated in the fee that goes to the managed service provider.
Have we ever thought of trying to find, see what else is out there besides Microsoft? Because they tend to be fairly buggy.
It's an interesting question. I, I could look around to see if anybody, you know, Google Docs is free. But I don't know if you get this, whether they have an enterprise product that would be something a municipality would want to use, whether there's security, there's, there's a certain level of security built in and the, the storage of their data in the cloud, our emails and things. It's worth looking into, but I, I, I don't know that I've seen another agency that I, I've worked for several different municipalities that had anything on them that Microsoft. So that might be what they give out.
Or maybe even somebody local, that some, some provider that's smaller than, like a Massachusetts base or an England base that would be not dealing with Microsoft.
I think that would be something for our new IT person.
Maybe? Maybe.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And similarly, there is a line down there in the box called phone maintenance and things. We have a legacy phone system. You know, we put something in capital, we're exploring. It may not, again, happen. We wanted to bite it for it until somebody comes onboard for IT. But to upgrade the existing phones to a cloud-based phone system, we do not have anybody that can truly operate this existing phone system. And Will was here. There is an individual, and I've talked to some telephone consultants, really like one or two people who still are around, who know how to program the phone system we have. And we have to pay that consultant to come out when we have new hires and things to change mailboxes. You know, it's an older product and there's not enough people that acknowledge the legacy of it.
Which is why you're asking for our money to get rid of it.
Say something, McCollum.
Thank you. So I'm very concerned. You know, we went to Munis. I remember when that whole change
Yep.
was approved and taking place and how they sang their praises, having themselves on the back and said that they were gonna make this a seamless transition and they were gonna be here for us and all that stuff. So did we not hold their feet to the fire and make sure? I mean, you said that this tran, that the, that the transition has not been smooth at all, still has bugs four years later, and we're still paying outrageous money. That happens a lot in this town where contractors, whatever, tend to get away with things. Can you explain how Munis, or maybe this isn't the place, maybe it is, it's the budget. We are talking about paying more money. That's really disheartening to hear that all that money that we approved to change systems in the system sucks, no?
No, I, I actually would say, I think on, for the financials, that it works pretty well. I just don't think it was, it was a lot more work than our last conversion, so maybe we didn't realize how much was gonna be involved in it. And I.
I've been told it's not, I don't know if the word's intuitive, it's not, it's actually not that easy by a number of people. Just saying. That's just been feedback I've gotten. So that, again, I heard that recently, so then when I sit here at the budget, it's.
But I think you also have to consider maybe who you're hearing it from also. I mean, there, there are some people that are better with technology than others, too. I don't know. I, I, I find it on my end that it's, it's a pretty good system.
Does it seem like the bugs are coming from the KBS side and it's just because of how old and outdated the KBS software is?
No, and I think that there are, and you know, I'll let the other, I know that Ms. Ashley has had some issues in some different areas. And I think Ms. Carney is looking for some additional training, too, but that is also because she's relatively new. I don't know what kind of bugs. So if you, if you wanna make any comments, too.
I would just preface that. That was my opinion, hearing the frustrations when, you know, I came into this and then maybe six months ago, there was a lot of problems with the reconciling and a lot of things for you. And we did have conference calls, and it took a while to get some of those people responsive, but we did, you know, we sat there and talked to them quite a bit. Or regularly, I would say. And you had a lot of emails going inside of us, and it was Ashley with them. So we, we did press upon them the need to get this resolved. But Ms. Ashley has, I think, had more issues, is that fair to say?
But add additional costs, because I remember there was a time when, you gotta remember the time when somebody was pregnant and somebody had a problem and they weren't gonna meet their deadline, and we were supposed to suck that up and not, and, and it was gonna cost us for additional time for them because they, they, they're gonna take maternity leave or something, and for like, wait, but you're, okay, so this is not imaginary. This was a lot of money that this town spent on this system. And so, you know, they're there for you, great, but is it costing us on these conference calls? I mean, are we still paying for something that was never right to begin with? Is, would be my question.
I'm, I'm probably too removed, but I know right before Will left, they were trying to go live with some of the portions of the billing, water, sewers, some of those. And that's where the integration of the KBS old data was a problem. Is that, is that?
Yes, sorry.
I thought this was supposed to be done in like two years.
I, I, I would say that, to be fair, I think everyone in this room has gone above and beyond trying to hold their feet to the fire. So it's not for a lack of trying for anyone in this room. I would just say.
So when does legal come in, though? Because that's always an option.
True.
Ah, four years later, ah, you know, I'm just saying, if people don't do what they're supposed to do and adhere to their contracts that we're supposed to adhere to, why aren't we getting our due? You know, I mean, someone's gonna stand up for the people. Just saying, okay, I just, frustrating to hear this again.
Because I thought this was supposed to be, I thought it was, I thought this was supposed to be done in like two years, and it's been like four years.
Right, right. There was a whole, I didn't realize it was still that, we had that much trouble. So I just heard something recently, and then I heard some more, and then I moved this into this, and how much money we're still paying. It's, and I'm not saying, it's not, I'm not suggesting y'all aren't trying.
Yeah.
I'm saying there's something wrong with the other side of the system or something. Just, it's kinda like bad carpeting.
And when does this end up, end up needing, end up aging itself out so that we end up having to replace it again? I mean, it's been so long, but some of these things, these systems tend to have, what, five-year, ten-year lifespan?
Did you upgrades?
Yeah.
They upgraded, they upgraded all the time. And I think that was part of our challenge, was that we had an upgrade. The upgrade just happened to be around tax time, so we had to plan it between when your taxes were due and payroll week. And so there was a lot of that happening. So that was part of our challenge there. So things like that. And that's what Michael's probably referring to. We, you know, we have had some bumps to drive over, but, but I think, I think we're finding our way.
I mean, I don't wanna downplay, I have had some, I had a heck of a time balancing receivables at the end of the fiscal year. Very, very, very frustrating. What it comes down to is there's a lot of time here.
Yeah, right, right, so that's, again, yeah, the value from investment.
Our time is spent to see this stuff. So I don't wanna say, I mean, I think overall, it's, it's a pretty decent system. But no, absolutely. We have had our struggles. We've had the people on there. We've been sending emails and emails. We get Michael involved in that. And I think we've maybe finally got to the point where there's a few bumps left, but hopefully not big ones.
Is there training?
But that's really sad that, that to hear that from.
There is some training.
Okay.
And, and also it's, they do it in blocks. And sometimes you've already taught yourself this level, so you're ready for this, and they really wanna do, you know, one-on-one, and you're like, I wanna get over here. Show me how to make the sandwich. We're already over here.
Yeah.
And they wanna talk about.
Well, they want all their money. They want the levels. They want all this.
Right, right. So, but I, I think that we've, I think we're figuring things out quite a bit, because we're working together. And we do find, once you find someone in Munis that's really helpful, then you're.
Got to.
Yeah.
Right.
And then that's who you go for.
Yeah. But it's more of a frustration to hear, to hear, you guys have to be frustrated.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's not that we're not supporting that, that factor. I'm just saying, it's a sad thing to hear.
So what do you, what do you often, would be a better way to do it?
We really, we really should be on the budget.
On the budget.
Come on, guys, you have a lot of hair.
Let me finish the question. And what do you think we as the council can do with, as, deal with, how, how can we deal with that as far as the council goes, as far as the budget goes, at least at this point? And there may be more, maybe there's a farther issue to discuss, to discuss this about how do we deal with this whole Munis issue, the stumbling blocks and all this other stuff? I mean, since we ultimately approved doing Munis in the first place.
Well, I would recommend you hire, I would recommend you hire a training person.
People.
Well, absolutely.
I've never utilized the program. That's the hardest transition for us.
That's not standard?
No.
Why is that not standard?
You would, you would.
Because you, you were just, you were, you're just assuming that people have Munis training? Why would you do that? Because there, there's different, clearly we have different systems already, so why would we assume that people are, are used to, why would you not do that?
I, I don't, I don't think it's that. I think what we were trying to do is push back at them.
Wasn't advertised, even, means.
And Tom Andrew McCall was trying to let, have them give us some days for free to make up for some of our frustrations.
Right, right.
That makes sense.
They're pushing back at us and saying, no. But at this point, I mean, we do still have some money left over at the end of the conversion that, you know, Ms. Carney can use in her department to get training. We were just trying to see if we could get something from them.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And we should, if they're giving us these hoops to jump through.
Yeah. But the last we heard, no, they're not interested in.
If you didn't send them their hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, I bet they would jump.
That's for sure.
Because they might not answer our.
Well, they don't answer you anyway. They don't answer you. If they don't get a check, they might call you. Hey, what's with the check? It's late. What's with your service? It's done. Get what you paid for.
Are there any other questions? Any other questions or comments?
I'm not sure how much we've put into Munis so far.
I don't want to know.
Any other questions or comments on this budget? Seeing none, all those in favor recommending the budget as presented?
Correct.
All those opposed? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number sixteen, review the fiscal year twenty twenty-three council reserve budget in the total amount of one hundred thousand and entertain a motion to submit to town council as presented.
So what?
Second.
Pretty standard. Any questions, comments? This is what we do every year.
There's the budget to come.
Okay.
Maybe. We haven't, we haven't used it much.
Just wondering, what do we use this for? Do we need this much?
If, if, if we use this, right now we, we, what we took down on that new. We haven't, did we just tran, make a transfer out of town council reserve recently to this budget book has come up?
We did.
How much was that?
It was forty thousand.
It was forty thou, and then we usually use it for end of the year transfers. So sometimes we need it, sometimes we don't. I've asked the same question in the past, Councilor McKeady, and there's always been some years in which we don't get close to it, and then there's other years in which we have unexpected costs that require.
I think a few years we got as close as like eighty-five grand or something.
Yeah.
And then what happens if we don't use it?
It goes into free cash, yeah. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number seventeen, review the fiscal twenty-three personnel budget in the amount of four million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and entertain a motion to submit to council as presented.
Second.
All right. This is sick, retirement, contribution. I did wanna ask about what's recruit and processing? What's, what's the specific use for that? Is that more recruitment?
I could imagine. Well, I, it generally has been used for some advertisements in the past, but it's also for the cost of the physicals and any tests that any of the potential employees have to go for.
Okay. So I, you said it's been used for some postings in the past, so now that we have an HR department, maybe it's something to consider in the next year to consider moving some of those.
Consolidating.
Consolidating instead of having recruitment in two different, it'll make more sense to be in HR's department anyway, just from my experience. Any other question, Councilor Steve?
Yeah, the line here says, per vacation sick buyback, twenty thousand, seventy-five. But if you look at the text, it says, vacation buyback per finance director town accountant contract, one week, two thousand and seventy-five.
Yeah, so if I could manage, so that's, it's in that number. It's nine thousand for two people, potential retirements, and then the two thousand and seventy-five dollars adds up to the twenty, zero, seventy-five.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I see. Okay, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments on this budget? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? The record shows four to one, four to zero to one with Mache abstaining.
You, you, you felt that coming.
I did. I, well, I didn't see your hand go up, so I kind of figured. All right. Agenda item number nineteen, review the fiscal year twenty-three group health and life insurance budget in the total amount of four million, three hundred thousand. Entertain a motion to submit to council as presented. Health insurance. Any other questions or comments from counselors, members of the board, Councilor Steve?
Yeah, it's a question. I noticed, I know this is, was twenty twenty-one actual. You've got negative figures for group insurance. What is that? And negative figure for medics. And it's a negative for so far for this year for medics.
What is that?
What is that?
Um, Sharon, actually, the health and life insurance is a little bit of an accounting nightmare.
No.
Doesn't look like that at all.
Not in our lives either.
Because actually, when we, when we do, and Sharon, if you could help me with this, so when we do the health insurance, we actually cut the deduction checks to the town, put it into the expense account, and then pay the expenses out of there. And it's becoming a little more complicated to break down those checks as to what exactly, whether it's town or school or what type of plan it is. And I'm not really sure how, you know, how beneficial it is to really have it all broken down, you know, exactly what plan and everything. So we kinda do the best that we can with it, and you kinda have to look at it overall. Like the town piece is good, the school piece is good, but the individual pieces don't run the bashful. Sorry. We haven't figured out a better way to, to work it.
No, but it's, it's also in the current year. It's the year of sixty-five.
Because how, just, just one little thing. How Munis does it is it actually charges the, the sixty percent for the town and the thirty percent for the employee, and you can't work around that. We can't shut it off because we'd like to, and then we could work it all a lot easier. Does that sound fair, Sharon?
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of recommending to council? All those opposed, all those abstaining? The record shows four to zero to one with Mache abstaining. Move on to agenda item number nineteen, review the fiscal year twenty-three general insurance budget in the amount of seven hundred and nineteen thousand and entertain a motion to submit to the town council as presented. Do I have a motion in the second? This one looks good. It went down, so I'll take it. It's always take a decrease. Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number twenty, review the fiscal year twenty-three other assessments budget, central mass regional planning in the total amount of five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight. Entertain a motion to submit to town council as presented. Do I have a motion in the second?
So.
I just noticed, by the way, Karen, that it's, it's double labeled. It's the label is other assessments, but it says total board and conditions. Board and period.
It's because it's in zero, zero, one, one, seventy-nine. It's in that organization, so that's where it's gonna be called.
And really, shooting other assessments, it's a CMRPC. Shouldn't that be going to P and D? It's a CMRPC budget, so. I mean, we can do it here, since it's already on our agenda, but for future reference, it should be.
Councilor McKeady?
I was just wondering, where's the benefit of this?
It's a, it's a regional optimization.
Yeah.
What's the benefit to some of these?
So Eric probably could explain that, and I didn't bring him here this evening. We worked with our regional planning council in the last jurisdiction. Oftentimes, they can provide resources that the council doesn't have.
Yeah.
They host trainings, and they work with the communities as a unit, so there, there are benefits to it. We used the Northern Millsx Council of Governments a lot of times. We couldn't do things on traffic studies. They would provide resources to do that, other things associated with planning, so. And I know they host quite a few trainings and seminars and our staff to participate in, so there, there is value to it.
Yeah, we, I know we've done several things with CMRPC over the years.
Such as?
I can't remember specifics at the moment, and it's also, I'm pretty afraid.
I did look at their website, and I know they provide some, some data on there, but it only goes up to two thousand tax. I just was wondering, what exactly does, is the benefit to us? I know that Councilor Adams is a member of it. Yes, I am too, but.
Yeah, you are.
And I've never really understood what the benefit of it is.
So within CMRPC, you have multiple agencies itself. So you have CMNPO, CMRPC itself, right now they're redoing a vision for themselves for the county of Worcester. Also, when we attend these meetings, and if you're a delegate or you're an alternate, you do receive hours. They receive hours for the town, and the town receives technical assistance through them. I believe they also go through the grant processes with you, for like the one-stop shop that Peg always talks about. So they, they provide all these things that are included. They also come down like we, just recently did the complete streets policy. That is part of, part of CMRPC, the shared streets policy as well. So these guys are all technical experts in multiple fields, from planning to economics to whatever it may be.
So they provide us a policy?
They, they can provide us, but they can give the county the policy. We can adopt certain things within those policies, which is good for the, for the town itself, like complete streets or shared streets or, or whatever may be. Green spaces, I believe there's multiple things for it. But they are doing, I think it's a twenty or forty-year vision right now for County of Worcester. So you take a look. I believe they also provide help with GIS and all that kind of stuff, so.
Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The record shows four to one, which Council Marquetti opposed. Move on to agenda item number twenty-one, review the fiscal year twenty-three historical commission budget in the amount of five hundred dollars and entertain a motion to submit to council as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pretty simple, five hundred dollars for their expenses that they have, should have any as a board, any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed, unanimous of all present. Turn to item number twenty-two, review the fiscal year twenty-three licensing commission budget in the amount of five hundred dollars and entertain a motion to submit to council as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, pretty, same as before, five hundred dollars.
Quick question, it's, I guess, either Karen and manager, um, so this is covering the local board, um, how many, how many hearings do they have? And do they, I mean, they didn't use it much this year, at all this year, or much in the previous year, but, I mean, this would cover their advertisement for public hearings and stuff like that, wasn't, cause I've seen several items where they went to public hearing for various things, but I don't know if they needed to use any of this.
I would say they probably hold in-person hearings at least once a month.
Yeah.
And oftentimes the applicants are required to pay for the publications and certain thing, that's standard, like we, um, we collect them and then when they notify you about it, we collect all the receipts. I can't comment what they were doing, probably weren't doing much during COVID, but they do have quite a, a lot of activity when they do hold those. So they usually wanna throw applicants in and they have here.
So what do they typically use this item for?
Off the top of my head, I, I, I would have to ask you, I would do it in my office and she's not here this evening because she's a part-timer, but she is the center of the club, they, um, handles all that here about, so, it may be postage when they send out things and I know the applicants do pay, um, pay for some of their own, um, postage, but I, they have to check. There may be other things that they have to put in the newspaper on their own, but I, I can give a better answer for you, for you on that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number twenty-three, review the fiscal year twenty-three special articles budget in the amount of ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars and entertain a motion to recommend to council as presented. Do I have a motion in a second? Any questions? Council Marquetti?
Thank you, I was just wondering what some of these, uh, you know, these items are, like, I don't understand the, you abbreviate a lot of them, so it's hard for me to understand, like, revolve, what exactly is that?
Revolve would be, we have to do a revolve of our assessments every year?
I see.
Yeah.
All right, it's just a question I have, what is that?
Is there any other one that you want us to go over, Council Marquetti, or?
Um, no, I guess, I guess not.
Does he have ambulance billing?
Ambulance billing.
Oh.
I get it.
Oh, have other postings lying out?
What's the unpaid bill that's just listed here, it was not even, it was for twenty twenty-one?
No, we, uh, that, that's on the rare circumstance where we have one and someone hasn't paid a bill from a prior year. We have to come to council and then.
What, what was the bill? What was the bill? Just, I can't remember off the top of my head what, what.
No, me neither.
Yeah, no, it's just a weird description, unpaid bill, what, why was the bill?
I don't know. Well, it was just something that we had already closed up books and then maybe somebody got an office supply bill or something that they didn't realize that they still owe and they have to come and we can't pay it under the current year if it's a prior year. So we just put it in that, in that line item called unpaid bills, and then we put the fund in there too. And then, then the, the one underneath is the cancer, the cancer screening that was for the fire department. And then originally when we started the roadway, we put in a special account roadway improvement, but now we pay to a capital project.
For you, Liz?
That was the, um, the, um, entry of system here for the town hall. We had a little bit of money left, that'll be gone, we'll pay the monthly fee.
I'm just, the, the reference, the, this past year had three hundred and seventy dollars charged to the landfill legal, what was that?
We still get occasional bills, there's, there's insurance obligations and there has been some issues carrying, um, in the casella, so we had to, we had to have our council go back and finalize some things. We do get some documents that get sent, um, from, um, the monitoring things and they do get sent to our council for review. So we do get an occasional bill, but we still forward some of those off to, to get Zurich, they, they paid some of the things in the coming. I can't speak to the exact three oh seven, but occasionally something comes in, um, and it's, um, um, I can't think, I think Peter. Two of the lawyers, I can't think of the name.
Some trace being.
But it's, it's the Worcester firm, um, it's not your.
Mar, Marico Connell.
Marico Connell, um, they're still, we, we kept the two lawyers, attorney Green and attorney McKay, who worked on it. I think we asked how we appointed council, they were appointed to remain there, uh, in case any event anything came through. And I do know that we did have something coming, well, I won't call it, but we did have something coming to their attention recently.
Okay, and what about the, um, the four hundred and eighty-four fifty for the anti-drug program? I thought that pretty much had fallen a part a year ago.
I know, I thought that was a gun.
I didn't know we had any money left in that account.
Yes, there is.
We put like twenty-five grand in somewhere, didn't we?
Yeah, and it went to that billboard network so well.
I believe so, yeah.
How much do we, how much do we actually have left in?
We could have seven or eight thousand, off, just off the top of my head, I think it's around there. And I think they're still doing some activities. Uh, there was something with the Y and M C A.
Are there?
Yeah.
That's, uh.
Council Marquetti, oh.
Jose Dingy is still doing that, right?
Huh?
I said Jose Dingy is still doing that, right?
And they, yeah, so they still meet roughly monthly and they do some, we, we used to think back in days, like dances, some type of social events with the Y. They use the money, maybe buy pizzas, coke, pick them things, um, some programs for the kids.
I wonder if that has to do with the new team program they just started?
That almost made it.
Cause we just did an interview with them and they were talking about it.
Okay.
If it's possible.
Any other questions? Council Marquetti?
I just, I just wanted to apologize because I see the next page answered my question, what, we've, I'm certainly right for not moving forward.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number twenty-four, the last one, guys, review the fiscal year twenty-three debt service budget in the amount of two million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and entertain a motion to submit to council as presented. Do I have a second? Any questions on this? It's, it's under tab seven. Any questions?
How are we doing on this debt? How much, do, do we have any hope that we'll get close to the bottom of it before we start the fire station?
Well, I, I want Miss Ashley to put together a, a chart just showing in the next few years what, uh, the main debt looks like and it's winding its way down, so then you could potentially have the intersections coming down, gap will start to pick up so they'd be maintaining a low amount of debt, in which generally a good thing because you don't work wild swings in what you have and don't have and it's stability, I think also this could put down on you, it looks at us, that we're managing our debt, so, um, it should work out, hopefully it will work out, like I just said, the intersection.
Okay. Cause we took the big bite with schools.
Right.
And that's, that, isn't that killing the school debts, finishing up? One of the larger payments I think was issued a lot.
It looks like there's two, there's two middle high school payments listed in here.
Oh, okay, this is this page.
Twenty-five and four hundred and thirty-five thousand. Plus the interest of almost five, a little over five hundred thousand. That's the killer, isn't it?
And it's gonna go up, that's not going down?
We need, we need, we need a public bank to get rid of this, cause that's what, that's what's killing it.
Any further, are we, are people looking for something or?
Public bank, yeah, so we don't have to pay, keep paying interest.
Are there any other?
I should have looked for the big numbers. And have you funded?
Um, Sharon, a quick, there are actually detailed, um, utilization schedules that are right behind it.
Yes.
Right, and do we agree on that?
A middle high school was structured a little bit different, where at the beginning we didn't have some principal payments and then they started increasing before they start decreasing. But there is detail in there that shows obviously that, you know, the interest is coming down, yeah, right behind it there.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, I, I'll enjoy that this evening.
I'll save it for the weekend.
All right, do we have any further questions or comments on the debt services budget? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor? Great meeting, everybody, I think this must be the quickest general government meeting, funding meeting we've ever had.